Dylan, I got 6:30. Are we ready to tip the seat?
Yes, we're ready.
Okay. Good evening. Welcome to Lowell Planning Board meeting for January 3, 2022. Happy New Year to all. This evening, we have three matters on, including the minutes for prior approval. So the first matter on the agenda we have is the December 6, 2021 minutes. Any board members have any comments or corrections or anything for the minute for December 6?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of December 6 as submitted.
So we have a motion on the floor? Anyone want to second that? Second by Mr. Lockhart, I believe?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The minutes were approved.
Mr. Chairman, as a point of order, I think Mr. Lockhart was absent for that meeting.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Okay, I'll second the minute. I'll second it then. I was present on that on December 6. I'll make up. I'll second the approval of the minute. So all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
I know it's not on the agenda, but at the last meeting, we continued the November 15 minutes. I do believe that we've received those since then. Does the board have any objection on action on those this evening? Or they like further time to look them over for the following meeting?
Mr. Chairman, I'm fine. It was actually a very short meeting. And so unless any other members have any objection, I would make a motion to approve as submitted.
You have a motion by Mr. Fichette. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Caleb, thank you. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. I was not present on the November 15th, so I will abstain. So those minutes are approved. Thank you. Okay, moving along for the public hearing, we have a site plan review. And this is 572-610 Lakeview Ave. The Lowell Housing Authority has applied to the Lowell Planning Board seeking site plan review approval for the addition of a one ADA accessible residential unit at the existing housing complex. The property is located in the traditional multifamily zoning district. The project requires site plan review approval pursuant to Section 11.4.2 (2) from Lowell Planning Board, and any other relief as requested under the Lowell zoning ordinance. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Yes, hi. So my name is Nora Schull, and I'm the project architect for the modernization project at the Lakeview Housing Development in Lowell. And I'm here today to represent the Lowell Housing Authority who owns and runs the property. And I believe Laura Watts, the capital asset manager, is also here. Before I jump into my summary of the project and how it addresses the city's master planning goals, Laura, did you want to say anything? So...
I think one agrees that the less I say, the better in these matters.
No, I guess you can hit her again later than after the end comments, after you do your presentation.
All right, and I will...
Okay, thank you.
And so I put together, just I pulled a few slides from our application because I thought it might be good to walk through them as I spoke about the project. And if anyone has any questions, please feel free to interrupt me as I go along. So let me see if I can get... Hopefully that is correct now. All right, so here is the existing site plan for the development. It currently consists of five single-story buildings with a total of 20 residential units. And so there are four one-bedroom units and then 16 studio apartments. And they're all for elderly low-income housing. So as part of the modernization project, we will be renovating the interior kitchens of all the existing units. And then we are proposing to add two additional ADA units on addition to Building 3. So that would be located here on the property. As part of the project, we're also doing site work. And so we'll be removing all the existing asphalt, which is represented by this diagonal hatch here. And we'll be extending the parking to provide new ADA spaces. And you'll see that a little bit better on the next slide. So then here is the proposed solution, where you can see the ADA unit has been added here. And then we've reconfigured all the existing walkways, so they're now ADA accessible. We've provided some additional seating areas for some exterior community space. And then we've extended the parking here. And as part of our design process, we did look at how we could try to provide the ADA units without breaking the building envelope. But the units are so small because they're all single-studio apartments. It was really difficult to provide all the required clearances. So to avoid having to merge two units together, which wasn't really feasible for the Housing Authority because of the limited housing stock, we proposed the addition, which is shown here. So now that you have kind of a sense of the project and what it proposes, I thought I would just try to walk through how our proposal addresses the different areas of concern for the city's comprehensive master plan. And so, starting with the design of the building addition itself, we're trying, the intent is to maintain the existing character of the development. So in this view, you can see this is the existing development as you're standing on Lakeview Ave, all the elevations. And then this is the proposed addition, which is in Building 3, which is in the back. And so we're continuing the gable roof line, we're extending the mason ravine year, and copying all the finishes of the existing development. Then you can see in kind of some perspectives, looking, if you're standing on Lakeview Ave, which is running this way, looking north, you'll see the development or the addition primarily. This is probably the most exposed view. Looking south on Lakeview, you don't see anything because it's blocked by this building. And then from VW of Highway, it'll be blocked by some landscaping that we're proposing here. So then for parking and loading, we're proposing to extend the existing parking area, which is right here, to provide these two new ADA spaces. And we'll be maintaining the existing five spaces that were there previously. Currently, there's no vehicular access throughout the site, so you're only able to go here, and that will be maintained. We are going to be expanding all of the sidewalks, so they're ADA compliant, as I mentioned previously, and then providing the new seating areas. So there'll be more kind of public walking, well, more communal spaces to be able to walk through. Then lastly, we're going to be providing a very designated clear drop-off zone here. So the intent of that is, since most residents don't have cars, they use either ride-share services or, I think the Housing Authority also provides different transportation options to bring them to different activities during the day. So the drop-off area is being provided, so they can pull in without stopping traffic from the street. We had looked at putting in some parking areas and other areas along the front edge of Lakeview Ave, but determined that because most tenants take public transportation and don't have cars, it would just be removing parking spaces from the other residents on the street, and it wasn't desired by the Housing Authority. We will be replacing all the exterior lighting on the buildings, but we're not adding any, so there should be no change to the exterior lighting or lighting conditions for residents nearby. Everything will be new LED lights to make it more efficient. We have some landscaping that we're proposing as well. So here's our landscape plan. There are three main trees existing on the development, which we'll maintain. And then we're proposing a bunch of different vegetation along VFW Highway to provide a visual and sound barrier for tenants, since they're pretty exposed currently. And so that'll be nice for neighbors and the tenants themselves. Snow removal on the property is handled by the Housing Authority, and that will continue to be handled by the Housing Authority, where they don't push snow into the public way. And that's just standard practice for the Housing Authority and will be continued. For utilities on the site, there's sufficient utilities to support the added unit. And then we are providing a dedicated sprinkler line to the Building 3, where a sprinkler system has been requested by the fire department and the building department. We've already reviewed that with them, and that's due to the additional unit that we're adding. We're also installing new stormwater management system, where you can see the two infiltration systems here. So that'll take in all the stormwater and re-infiltrate onto the site. And we've reviewed that with the city's stormwater management team as well and had that approved. So we feel pretty strongly that, you know, our proposal is very much in keeping with the city's master plan and goal. And then if you have any questions or would like some additional information, I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you very much. Will anybody else be speaking on behalf of the applicant?
Just me.
Okay. So at this point in time, what I'll do is I'll turn the form over to the public. Anybody here this evening like to speak in favor of this project? Anybody in favor? In favor, in favor? Hearing none? Anybody at this time like to speak in opposition? In opposition, in opposition, in opposition? This time hearing none. Anybody like to speak at all in favor or questions or comments? Anybody like to speak? Okay, hearing from none at this time. I'll turn it over to the board members. Any of the board members have any comments, concerns, questions?
Chairman, if I may?
Sure, absolutely.
I think in the memo that we received from planning staff, there was a reference to a FEMA letter of map amendment. And having that on file with the city, I believe there was reference to this project falling within the floodplain, and the Lowell Housing Authority responded with the fact that there was a Loma submitted. I wasn't sure if that was submitted as part of the project records.
I know we had shared it after we spoke for the special permit review. We spoke with Francesca and Jessica from the office and shared documents with them. I don't know if there's a more formal process, but we can share those again, showing that it, because of the revision, we're not in any of those districts.
Dylan, do you know if staff received that, or do you have any comment on that? If not, we can always follow up with Francesca or whoever.
I can follow up and check on that. It may have been submitted. There was a prior, this went before the zoning board before, and it may have been submitted then. So I'd have to check that.
Okay, thank you. Okay. So obviously, if we don't have it on file, would there be no problem on having that given to us on file, so we would have it in the future, so you wouldn't have to go before the Conservation Commission?
Yeah, that's no problem.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Russell, anything else?
No, that was all I had, Chairman. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Russell. Any other board members?
I have just a comment, Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
I was over there this morning. I looked at the site. You know, I think it works very well. There's plenty of room for this additional unit, and I don't see any issue with the project whatsoever.
Thank you, Mr. Lockhart. Caleb, any questions, comment?
Maybe just a question. Have the applicant considered bike racks? I know sometimes bike racks aren't the, you know, the best facilities if bike can be stored indoor, which is easily accessible. So...
Yeah, we hadn't discussed bike racks, I think mostly because it's an elderly population, so there's few people who ride. There is plenty of kind of storage outside next to the tenants' doorways. And there are railings there that they could lock to, but we could, we could look at bikes. I'm just not sure how, how many people bike at that development, especially with the pickup-drop-off area.
Got it. Well, thank you for explanation. That sounds reasonable. And also, I just want to make a comment that I like the proposed vegetation along the highway. I think it will enhance both, both sides, like more privacy to the tenants and also blocking the noise somewhat. So thank you.
Thank you, Caleb. Mr. Fichette?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I would agree with fellow board members that this is a low-impact proposal. I too, I think the landscaping along the Boulevard is actually an added feature that I think really is, was well thought out. And bringing it up to ADA standards, I think obviously is where it's elderly, low-income housing, I think is, is an improvement to the, to the site. So from that perspective, I really think that, you know, it was well presented. I really, I will just comment, I appreciated the elevations that were provided to give us the different view with the other buildings. Many times, we get just the elevations of the subject structure that's having, you know, the, an addition or, you know, that's being proposed, but it was, it was, I appreciated the way that was submitted to give us some idea of how that was going to sit visually within the other buildings as well. So it was well presented and not really a lot to say, other than, you know, on, relative to the Loma, I guess, I mean, it's, you either present the Loma or you have to go to Conservation to get their approval one way or the other. But anyways, I'm pleased with the proposal. Don't really have any, any recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fichette. I as well like the project. I think whenever we can help out for the Lowell Housing Authority to put an addition on, better the site that they have and exist in now, where people are already living. I like the fact in how you did take care of the landscaping, as mentioned by the other board members, the ADA walkways and the parking. And I think you have plenty of parking where you put in the front. I visited the site a couple of times, and I'm in agreement with how you did the parking out front. And when I was there, there was hardly any cars parked out front. So it's not like it, when I've been by in the past, it's not like it's full for the cars being in the front for that drop-off area. How old are those buildings? I know that by looking at them, they look like they've been here for a little while, so... Do you know how old those existing buildings are? And I know they've been there for a while, but...
Yeah, I think they were built in the 50s.
Oh, okay, yeah. Because by looking at them, you're like, you can tell they've been around a little bit, so... But yeah, so I think it's a nice site, and I think, you know, obviously the Lowell Housing Authority does good work. And obviously, anything we can do to help, I'm all in favor of it. So thank you very much. We appreciate that. So what they're looking for is just a site plan approval. What's requested the board? I know staff gave us some comments. They didn't have any real concerns, except for the ones that Russell mentioned about, you know, whether they have to go to Conservation or not. They said they can comply with that, so... And staff had everything else. We had a nice letter from staff, and I want to thank Peter for that. And yeah, they seem to be in, in favor of most of the comments that they've sent to us, so... So we need a motion for, for a site plan.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the site plan for the project.
You have a motion by Mr. Lockhart for approval? Do we have a second?
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Mr. Fichette. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Chair vote yes. So the motion carries. You are approved for the site plan. Good luck and appreciate the good work. Thank you very much.
Very much.
Mr. Chairman, I will comment. It's not often we approve a project without any conditions whatsoever, so it was...
No.
It was well presented.
No, no, they did a good job. I mean, and like I said, the landscaping was very nice and the parking, and yeah, they did a very good job. So moving along on the agenda, we have a floodplain overlay district. So in accordance with the overlay floodplain overlay district, in accordance with Mass. General Law Chapter 48, Section 5, the Lowell Planning Board will hold a public hearing to hear all interested persons relative to an ordinance to amend the Code of Ordinance, City of Lowell, Massachusetts, with respect to Chapter 290, therefore entitled Lowell Zoning Code, by amending Article 9 Overlay Districts, specifically Section 9.1, entitled Floodplain Overlay District. The proposed updates would bring the city's floodplain overlay district in compliance with FEMA and NFIP rules to ensure Lowell residents continue to qualify for flood insurance. Changes were made to align with the state's model floodplain bylaw. So I believe this comes before us for our vote, and then from here, I believe it goes to the city council for city council vote. I know we received a detailed memorandum from Assistant City Manager Christine McCall, which I'm sure we all have a copy of, and it was pretty lengthy, and what they're adding in, what they weren't adding in. I know I spoke with staff, and staff said they can answer any questions if need be on your overall. But it sounds like basically, they just want to make sure that we're up to date with the... So people in the city can still get flood insurance, that they want us to be up to date with the proposal to bring us in compliance with FEMA. Dylan, do you have anything to add at all? Or does any board members have any questions or anything to say, Dylan, from staff?
No, I think you covered it well. The changes are just to bring it in line with the model floodplain bylaw. There's no substantive changes.
Okay. Thank you, Dylan. Any question by board, well, before I get to board members, I'm sorry. What I'll do now at this point in time is, anybody this evening want to speak in favor of the amendment to the floodplain? Anybody in favor? In favor, in favor? Hearing none? Anybody against? 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 Hearing none? This time, I'll turn it over to the board members. Any of the board members have any questions? Sounds like more of a procedural matter, just to comply with FEMA is what I get out of the contents of the memo.
Mr. Chairman, if nobody has any comments, I would just go forward with the motion to send it to the city council with a positive recommendation to adopt.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor?
Second.
Yeah, second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Chair vote yes. So the zoning amendment has been recommended to be approved as going before the city council. Dylan, do you know if they have a date scheduled for that yet, or if anybody's watching wants to know when that might be before them?
I do not know.
Okay. So if anybody has any questions, they can contact City Hall, and they can give you when that should be coming up before the city council. Okay, thank you very much. So moving along on the agenda, we have a pre-application. So another business, we have a pre-application hearing. This is 817 Merrimack Street and 680 Father Morissette Boulevard. Aptitude Acquisitions LLC has applied to the Lowell Planning Board for a pre-application hearing for a proposal to demolish the existing building and construct two residential buildings at 817 Merrimack Street and 680 Father Morissette Building. Building 1 would be a seven-story structure containing 126 residential units, two levels of structured parking, and a first-floor amended space at 817 Merrimack Street. Building 2 would be a seven-story structure containing 126 residential units with ground-floor leasing office and clubhouse at 680 Father Morissette Boulevard. The subject properties are located in the institutional zoning district. When the full application is filed, it will require a site plan review and special permit approval from the Lowell Planning Board. It will require a variant from the Lowell Zoning Board of Appeals, and will also need a store board approval for the number 680 Father Morissette Boulevard structure. This is here, like I say, as a pre-application. The board will take no vote on this matter. It's here for informational purposes, and for this to be approved or to go to a public hearing, they would have to republish and come back before us for a public hearing. But saying that, I'll turn it over to the applicant. If we can hear from the applicant, please.
Good evening, Chairman Linehan, members of the board. My name is Attorney John Cox, 375 Gorm Street, Lowell, and I represent Aptitude Acquisitions LLC in this very, very exciting proposal. You may recall, it was in front of you for another pre-application hearing back in the fall, I believe. And at that time, the applicant was considering, and actually had, I think, applied for some form of some student housing along with, on this proposal. Since that time, and after listening to the feedback from the board back in the fall, you will note that the student housing aspect of it has been dropped. This is totally multifamily at this point. As you said, Mr. Chairman, this contains two contiguous parcels of land, approximately 70,000 square feet. Currently, the River Edge Medical Office Building, we're all, we're all familiar with it, exists there as well as the surplus parking lot. The plan would be demolish the existing building and put in the two new buildings that you talked about. The new buildings would be very, very exciting, but before I go on any further, I want to introduce the people who were with me, at least remotely, this evening from Aptitude Acquisitions. Jared Cutter. Jared is the principal of Aptitude Development, Aptitude Acquisitions. Also Zachary Feldman, who is the Vice President of Development for Aptitude. Also with us is Kelly Colleen, the engineer from CHA. And also with us is Jason Lutz, who's the architect on the project that has done a lot of the work and the plans that have been submitted. Clearly, this is a work in progress, and we expect to be a long, not a long process, but certainly a progress. We would need the various from the zoning board, we'd need a site plan review, we'd need a special permit from the planning board, as well as some approvals from the historic board. So it's, there's a lot in front of us, and we're here tonight to get this board's important feedback on how we can make this a better proposal, even though it is now. Clearly, we all know that quality housing is needed in the city of Lowell, quality market rate housing. And we feel that these units would, would fill a big void that currently exists in the city. There'd be beautiful buildings, the top of Merrimack Street, looking out over the Merrimack River. There'd be sweeping views of the river and the canal, something which would be a first of its kind in the city. Another thing that I think would be the first of its kind, on Building 2, we would have roof decks, which would be overlooking the river and the beautiful area over there. Also, we would have lobby amenities. There'd be clubhouse and fitness centers, commuting, community lounge areas, and outdoor decks. This could be a really exciting corner there that is totally underutilized now. I think we could all, all agree with that. The building's been there a long time, and clearly would be, is currently underutilized. We will, we'll work with the city and DPD on street state development, which obviously is important to, to this project and any project like it. And one of the things that I know that DPD and I believe the planning board suggested back in the fall was alternative transportation situations, because obviously, parking is, is an issue. And so what we will stress is alternative transportation. And so what we will stress is alternative transportation, onsite bicycle accommodations, possible EV charging stations, we'll have information on public transportation, the LRTA, and rideshare programs using EVs. The proposal can be most exciting, again, turn an underutilized piece of property into something that's beautiful, something that's vibrant, something that I think that area of, especially Merrimack Street and Father Morissette, could use right now. Another important thing here would, the property would stay private, and therefore the increase in tax revenue to the city would be, I believe, substantial. We took a lot of the DPD recommendations from their memo of September of 2021 and have put them into this program, not the least of which is master plan goals to preserve quality of neighborhoods, safe and welcoming neighborhood, high-quality housing, water first access. This would be a green project, really probably be greenest of projects that are going on in the city right now. So I know you probably have a lot of comments, and I know that Garrett and Zach and Kelly and Jason can answer a lot of these specific questions, but clearly, we understand this is just the beginning, and we expect working closely with the city, with the planning board, with the zoning board, with the historic board, as well as obviously DPD and all of the department, departments of the city, that we can turn this into a first-rate project that you and everyone in the city will be proud of. I want to thank Francesca and Dylan for all the help on this, and we're eager to work with you on this project. So with that, I will turn it over to, it is yours, I'm not turning it over to you, obviously, but you're in charge clearly, and there's other guys around, joining us remotely to answer any questions.
So will anybody else be speaking, Attorney Cox, on behalf of your application?
Well, I think if there are specific, if there are specific questions, yes.
Okay, I didn't know if anybody else was going to do a presentation. Okay, thank you.
Totally up to the board.
Okay, thank you. Okay, but at this point in time, any of the board members have any comments?
I have a couple of questions, Mr. Chairman.
Sure, Mr. Lockhart.
On a memorandum dated December 29th, from Francesca to her staff and others, there's a couple of questions I have relative to, on the second page, the applicant has cited a number of transportation demand management, TDM, strategies that they propose to employ to compensate for the lack of parking on site. These strategies include, and it goes A through H on this page, a question on item E, it says decoupling apartment and parking pass rental leasing. I'm not sure what that means. Can somebody explain that to me?
Zach, do you have anything on that one?
I may be able to help out on that. Kelly from CHA, what we're talking about is, there's a bunch of ideas that are thrown out there as part of the TDM plan, and decoupling the parking spaces is essentially just that you don't need to take a parking space if you come in to rent a unit. You can rent a unit without, without a designated space.
Oh, all right, okay. And the following, and the item right after that, F, providing subsidy for public transit passes, what do you mean by that?
When I had proposed this, these are many ideas that are out there as part of TDM plans throughout many cities and towns, and the idea, and I'm not saying that it's going to be specific to this project, but sometimes is a reduction in rates, rental rates. I'm not saying or suggesting what that would be now, but as part of the overall application, we will provide many, much more detail into what is proposed for this, but it may be, you know, bus passes or such, to get you down.
You really haven't defined that in total, it sounds like.
We have not. This is Jared Hutter from Aptitude Development. Just to tell you, you know, examples of things we've done in past projects on that, on that same notion, what we have done is we've offered Uber credits to people in the past, we've bought transit passes that we've used, you know, for some people, we've done ride sharing at our own property, where we've had Zip Cars and the likes of that for people to rent. So we've done a number of different things at different properties across the country, and to Kelly's point, you know, we're not sure exactly what will be employed here, but those are different strategies that we've used in the past.
All right, I understand.
Thank you.
All right, just one other question on the following page, on item number six, that states, "To our knowledge, the applicant has not contacted the historic board administrator regarding this proposal." I just, I can't emphasize enough that you ought to move that along, because that individual has had a lot of design knowledge and materials knowledge that could help this development look better and just be, you know, a higher quality overall. Steve Stoll is his name, and I've known him for a number of years. He really knows his business, so you should take advantage of that, you know, as soon, early in this project as you can.
Thank you for that point, Mr. Lockhart. If I may, clearly know Mr. Stoll as well, and this is just the very beginning of this process, but clearly, your point is very, very well taken. Steve will be involved in this as we start to get a little more concrete information going forward, but thank you for that point.
The design, the design aspect of it is important, and, you know, he's been involved in all those projects in the downtown area, and he could be of great value to you. That's all.
Yes, thank you. Thank you.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Lockhart. Any other board members?
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Sure, Mr. Fisher.
Just several things to touch base on, and, you know, it's exciting to see a project come, or start to come together for that section of the upper Merrimack Street corridor. That's been looked at. I am going to reference, it was an upper Merrimack Street corridor study that was done back in 2016, but I would like to just reference Francesca's memo that Mr. Lockhart was also referencing on December 29th. On the memo on item number five, and it becomes challenging, we've been using the transportation management plans, especially for buildings that were probably located, you know, a little bit more in the downtown area, closer to the Gallagher Terminal, closer to parking garages. And one of the challenges of developing in the acre has been the lack of a public parking garage, and it's a real challenge. On item number five, A, talks about a couple of things. First of all, the parking ratio, and I think that needs to be looked at. You know, I was looking at, it's institutional zone, but it was always zoned that way, because obviously we had, you know, Saint's Memorial that was up there, or Saint Joseph's, we want to go back far enough, and, you know, some of the mill buildings up on the Lancet side and, you know, up and through that area, the university. But, you know, one of the zones that it does about is the DMU, the downtown mixed-use zone. So I was looking at some of the parking requirements there. I think in the memo, it's, you know, suggesting at least a ratio of at least one per unit, one parking space. I would ask you to take a look at that. Also, on the ride-sharing plan, or the transportation management plan, it's not a cure-all, and it's, we're incorporating it more and more. I think it's a necessity, but they make, you know, a very good point here. You know, the downtown market basket is approximately a half a mile away. You know, the standard is usually about a quarter of a mile, where it's reasonable to go in, in, you know, find a means to do your grocery shopping from that distance. So I think those are some challenges that we really have to look at, and I thought that was very poignant here. You know, we want to see a transportation management plan, but I think we really have to look at, it's a little more unique, and for this board, because we've applied it in developments that are really more in the central downtown location, closer to the Gallagher Terminal, closer to, you know, some of the downtown amenities versus this particular location. And from this location along Protector Street, it's more auto-oriented, unfortunately, you know, so that's something to think about. Also, to the team, Attorney Cox, an email, a very thoughtful, thoughtful email from the city's design planner, Jess Wilson, was forwarded to us dated today, so I know not a lot of advanced time, but there were some really good points in that email, and obviously, the reference, and I think your team recognizes the importance of the streetscape, and we want to try to, any chance we have to improve that, especially along this corridor, and in any location within the city, we try to incorporate that into projects. So that, that obviously is going to be important going forward. She also references the demand management plan in the issue with the parking. In her memo, she was referencing a misprint of the ratio of 833, but ideally, we still want to see that increase from what was in this proposal here. And then the ground floor uses, you know, that has been something that goes back, geez, Attorney Cox, and probably when you were even city manager, when we looked at the parking garage on, 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 on Market, I'm sorry, on Middlesex Street, having some retail space on the, on the first floor.
Yeah.
And even in the, in the parking section of, and I would ask DPD maybe if they can share this with the applicant, but, you know, I've been the city's representative, the planning board's representative to NEMCOG for the last 14 years, and in 2016, August 2016, it was a Merrimack, there was an upper Merrimack Street, Protector Street land use and zoning study, and it really talks about some of the parking challenges, you know, and it indicates in one section here, "New parking garage facility in the vicinity of the upper Market Street, the students' facility would benefit the neighborhood as well. Whenever possible, a parking facility should be funded by a structure to screen the facility from street view. Sometimes referred to as a line of buildings. Alternatively, commercial use could be integrated into the structure at the street level. Parking facility should not overwhelm the neighborhood structures. It should be limited to no higher than three levels." I think in Jessica's email, again, she talks about the many planning studies, multiple studies, that really reference the street level having some sort of commercial use, and in the, all the plans for the acre section is to try to incorporate that into, you know, into buildings, mixed use, and I think even what happened on the Gen. Credit Union property with the final proposal, that's what they ended up, you know, realizing the importance of that, and trying to incorporate that in there with parking. And also Jessica references the building massing, that second building, you know, we get a lot of opinions on that, but obviously, I think there's really, you know, there's an opportunity to have the building follow that circular flow of, you know, the French Street Extension there going around. It could really be a spectacular-looking building in that way, but I know there's going to be a lot of, a lot of, what do they say, too many soup, cook spoiled the soup. You're going to have historic board, you're going to have the city's design planner, and you're going to have the planning board. So, you know, a lot of challenges there, but I think you could come up with something better than having a, an L-shaped building with outside fire pits facing the road. I don't necessarily think that's, that it sounds, in some respects, it sounds like it's a nice feature, but I think you really need to look at that from an urban perspective. I'm not necessarily sure that's right application there. So, again, it also, in the Merrimack Street, upper Merrimack Street study, talks about the stress on that intersection of the Howe Bridge, Merrimack Street, you know, the parking. When I leave tonight, when I leave the planning board meetings every night from City Hall, I go right down the Merrimack Street, Upper Merrimack, and those of you who know me know I live in Protectorville, I'll go right past that location. There's not a parking space available. It's just not available on the street. So obviously, that's, that's a challenge. Need to think about that, and try not to stress that. At a certain times, A, the height, the height of traffic, that intersection is stressed. So we would be looking for a traffic study as well. So I know there's a lot there to incorporate. I know this email was dated January 3rd. I really thought this was a very thoughtful email, and would ask you to really work with Jessica, and obviously, you'll be working with the historic board. Again, the concept of the, of the project is very exciting, but as noted by Attorney Cox, you recognize you're, it's in a, it's in a development stage, and getting input from all parties, and trying to come up with something that really we can all be very proud of, and put that, you know, that, those parcels of land to some real good use for the city and in that neighborhood. Again, those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fisher. Your point is very well taken. We are aware of that, of Ms. Wilson's memo of today. We did review it, and clearly, this is the beginning, so, you know, we will, we'll look, everybody's input into this thing, and we're going to come up with a plan that's going to work for everybody.
Caleb or Russell, any comments, questions?
Yes, Chairman, I have one comment.
Sure.
More so. I guess when I look at the project and I review the narrative that was drafted to Mr. Slagle, my eyes are drawn to the maximum floor area ratio and what's proposed and what is required for our zoning, and it seems a very significant ask in my mind, and it sort of makes me question whether or not this development is in scale with the rest of the neighborhood. We're looking at for building one on 817 Merrimack Street, that the proposed floor area ratio is 4.1, and the zoning requirement is 2.0. And then building two on 680 Father Morissette Boulevard is proposed at 3.3, the maximum being 2.0. So I don't know if there's something the applicant can do to sort of lessen the impact on this development. It just seems very, very large for the scale of the neighborhood.
Very, very good point. Something that we will try to work on. Clearly, as Mr. Fisher pointed out, it's a challenging piece of property where it lies, but still very underutilized. And so I think if the city, I think if we want to obviously move forward on this, yeah, we will do, we'll try to do a better job with it, clearly. Where we end up, you know, what's feasible, I don't know it as we sit here today, clearly, but that's where, that's where we're starting the process, you know, and we will, again, take input from DPD and other departments of the city, as well as obviously this board and other boards, historic board, to try to come up with a proposal that, although it might not be perfect in everyone's mind, it might best utilize the site.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Caleb, any questions, comment?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. So I agree, concur with the rest of the board on the issues that is already mentioned, but I have a few points to add. Well, first of all, I remind other developers that if you're going to have bike lockers or bike racks, please consider not putting it where it is hard to. or bike racks, please consider not putting it where it is hard to access, like the basement. Or if so, think of how the bikers can put their bikes down there easily. So just a comment there. Secondly, I agree with Member Fischette's comment that there's certainly a first-floor commercial space opportunity, and I think that works together with the TDM as well. And I remember a while back that there is some planning for a kind of a bike lane down Merrimack Street toward downtown through the acre. I don't know if that's still the case, whether staff, if someone add whether that plan is still in play.
I don't know what the status is of the bike lane in Merrimack, so I can't comment.
Yeah, I remember seeing concept of some type. But like, along with streetscapes, like improvement, I mean, if you make Merrimack Street more walkable and also provide commercial amenities, like right at the locality, I don't see why, like, you know, you can make a better argument of providing less parking since people can then definitely walk around. And then the first-floor commercial space, like certainly, there are adjacent space like that, I mean, there is the bookstore for the university across the street, and then there's Cody's, I think, the convenience store down the road as well. So there are certainly opportunities for commercial space, and I really encourage the applicant to consider that opportunities now that you are adding hundreds of people to this part of the neighborhood. And then to add on Member Pendre's comment, I would think that some type of massing can probably soften the FAR differences, particularly with the rest of the neighborhood. And I would think that you, a higher FAR toward the river might not be a bad idea. Now, you have a great view down there, but certainly, you know, work with the geometry and the limitation of the site. But I will also encourage the architect to really play with that and see what creative design that you can come up with. And also, the type of materials that might be complementary to the adjacent buildings. So I think that's all my comments. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Caleb. I just have a couple of comments. So since you came before, it's the first time, you increased the unit from 156 to 252. So you went up 906, excuse me, 96 more units and you decreased the parking. You went from 0.93 down to 0.65. So I think we emphasized that parking was an issue, and so here you came back with less parking and more units. So I guess you didn't hear this too well on the first proposal when we told you that we thought parking was an issue. And then you talk about your transportation demand management for lack of parking on-site. And then when the board members asked about them, you said, "Well, this is what we've done on some sites in the past, but didn't say we were going to do these on this site." So I think you're not doing too much to address the parking. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, thank you for your input. Clearly, we look to work towards these situations that could be called deficiencies, I suppose, in some people's minds, but I hear you saying, well, I mean, I was not there in the fall meeting. My understanding was, you know, the student housing aspect of it. But clearly, there's other issues that, believe me, you will be heard as we go forward.
Yes, I just, you know, I think like other board members, it's just too much parking up there. I mean, when you have a three-unit, you know, three-bedroom unit, and they have, what, less than half a car, I mean, equal to half a car, I'll be honest with you, even when Fran said she thought one-train unit would be fine, I think that's kind of low myself. I mean, and they were pretty much at it before at 0.93, then they reduce it down. So instead of going up, they're going, I mean, they're making it bigger, a lot bigger. And like I said, you know, there's some comments about the streetscape, which they can make the coming around look a lot nicer. But I think what I'm seeing here compared to the last thing is, we're going to make, we're going to eliminate parking, we're going to make the buildings bigger, we're going to take away parking spaces, put more units in, and transportation demand management, well, these are some things we do sometimes, but we don't know if we're going to do any of these this time. So those are just my comments. I understand every comment from Attorney Cox, and I know you weren't with us the first time, but you asked for our feedback, and I think you got basically most of our feedback.
Really did, thank you.
Thank you. Any of the board members have any further follow-up? If not, then hopefully, we'll continue to see how this progresses in the future. Thank you, Attorney Cox, and thank you very much for the applicant coming forward. And hopefully, we'll see how this turns out with some of the concerns that was raised tonight by our staff.
Appreciate it, thanks very much.
Okay, have a good night, thank you.
You too, thank you.
Thank you. Moving along on the agenda, do we have any further comments from any of the board members? Starting off the new year. Jerry, I know the, last time you talked about how NEMCAG was looking for a new director over there, and I know you're in that process.
Mr. Chairman, we actually did, we did hire a new executive director. And his name is David Fielding, and he's actually working with Beverly. Beverly was so kind, she's actually postponed her retirement by about 30 days a month to spend some time with him, which we appreciate.
Was there a little transition period?
Exactly, exactly.
That's very kind of her.
So, which is really good. And it's been really good, Jay, you know, as you know, Jay Donovan retired as well. And Jay has certainly availed himself to phone calls as well in this transition because it's very, you know, unusual, we're the two top people of an organization retiring, basically, you know, within 30 days or 60 days of each other. We're excited. It was a very well thought-out process, and we're excited this gentleman has a planning background, and that's what we wanted. We didn't want, you know, an administrator, we didn't want, I mean, there were a lot of good candidates, but we were really looking for somebody that had a specific planning knowledge and education and experience. And so we're very excited. Going to be a new era for NEMCAG.
Sure, Beverly's been there for a long time, and she was with your previous director, yeah. I remember when I was on NEMCAG, she was over there. That was a while ago. So we wish her well, and obviously, congratulations to the new director over there. Thank you for your input, Jerry. Any other board members have any comments?
The historic board has not met for quite some time, but I'll have a full report after our next meeting on February 10th.
Okay, thank you. Any other board members have any comments?
January 10th.
Oh, okay, January 10th, okay. Any further comments from any other board members? If not, we can entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Motion's made in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Cheer bow cheers. We are adjourned. Good night, everybody. Happy New Year again, and thank you very much. Have a great night.
Take care, everyone, stay well.
Stay healthy, thank you.